Okay, please, everybody. This meeting is now called to order. If you'll please stand, we'll do the pledge and the invocation, please. We'll do the pledge first.
Please remain standing. Our council lady, Rosanne Striker, will do the invocation.
Dear God, our mighty God and Father in heaven, we thank you, Lord, that you are with us tonight and that you will be with us in all decisions, and we pray that you will give us civility, guidance, wisdom, as we make best choices for this little city of ours. And tonight, Lord, before we begin this meeting, I just want to take a moment and pray for Israel, and pray that you will bless that country that's so broken, and, Lord, that you will deliver them from this terrible event that's happening in them. I pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Folks, if y'all will bear with us tonight, we're gonna kind of juggle the agenda a little bit, so if you see me stuttering, it's because I don't know what I'm doing.[95.42][95.42](Laughter). But y'all probably already figured that out. And anyway, we're gonna try to, we're trying to find some structure and some streamlining here, so anyway, everything's gonna be, we're gonna cover everything, but just maybe not in order. Okay, Cindy Capps, your first one on the agenda.
I'm Cindy Capps. My address is 14070 Redbird Trail, zip code 76513. Sorry about my cane. I'm here tonight, first of all, to say thank you to all of you, council and Mr. Mayor, for the work you do for Morgan's Point. I attend a lot of community events here, and I've seen each and every one of you at at least one, a lot of you at more than one, and Mr. Mayor at I don't know how many. So I know all of you love this city, and I thank you for that. I'm here to give two suggestions for the council. The first suggestion is recommendation for better communication. I feel like we need complete, clear, and open communication at all of our meetings, and without that, there are misunderstandings, and as you know, there have been misunderstandings around certain meetings this year. And so I would, I would ask you to, to see what we can all do to improve that skill. My recommendation is that when an issue is being discussed, please discuss it in an open meeting where everybody can see your opinion, learn how you stand, hear your point of view, understand how you feel, and then after all the discussion is over, please vote the motion up or down. We will all respect you for that, whether we agree with you, whether we disagree with you. We will agree that you stood your ground, you explained to us how you felt, and we can all leave satisfied that we understand the issue better. My second suggestion is a lot harder for you, and I understand that, but I still need to say it. I believe that we should revisit the idea of staggered terms. And the reason for that is the desire for every ruling body, I don't care if you're city, if you're state, if you're national, every ruling body relies on experience. And our founding fathers felt like that was so important that they, as short as the U.S. Constitution is, in Article One, Section One, they included staggered term limits in that I just think it would be the perfect solution for Morgan's Point. All of you came on to this council knew there was no experience to give context, or counsel, or history to the different events that, and issues that you considered. And I really think that a cohesive council moving forward would benefit this entire community. I know it takes courage, I know it's hard, I know some of you will sacrifice a year, but all of us will respect you for being selfless and for looking to the future of this community and what's best for her. All of the people who voted for you know you, they understand you, they understand your position on issues, they support you.
Cindy, we need to move, you got three minutes, please.
Okay, and they will again vote for you, whether it's one year or a two-year term. Doesn't matter how you do it, but please find a way to do it. Be selfless, support this city going forward, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mary, I appreciate that. You ran over our three minutes, but I didn't, I didn't read the statement. That's okay, you're good.
I'm sorry.
You're good. I didn't read the disclaimer earlier, because it looks like most of you have only heard that every time you come in here, so I apologize for that. And I guess everybody knows, we do ask your, try to hold your comments to three minutes, and to, as you know, we cannot respond by state law. And Cindy, we will address one of those items today that you brought up, so we'll see what happens from there, okay? Denise?
Well, first off, I wanted to say thank you for that National Night Out. It was really fun that how eager some of the firemen were to show off the new rigs. So that was a lot of fun, and bringing the community together is always a very good idea. And thinking on that part, growing up in California and thinking about that we don't have no burn signage in our parks here in MPR, and fire season is not getting any better as we look at that lake going down, 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 we really need to think about one of those points. I know that was brought up by somebody two, two times back, and I'm like still thinking about it, because the dangers of fire with such a tight community, it's pretty fast and burns fast. So if we can think about that. And I do agree with her bringing up again about scattered terms, because I don't know why it hadn't been initiated in the past, but seeing this turnover has really shown us that we need to really think about this. So if we could think about that again, I'd really appreciate it, because I'd like to see it. So thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
Oh, I'm 114 Great West Loop, sorry.[534.12][534.12](Laughter).
Okay, let's see. Alma?
Donna Hartman, 112 Great West Loop, that was my neighbor. And I want to reiterate what Cindy said, thank y'all for all the hard work that y'all have put in, especially getting past the budget time and, and some of the things we've been through. Thank you, council, thank you, mayor. Uriah, and welcome aboard. I'm sure you had to hit the ground running, buddy, and we appreciate you so much. Just a real quick comment, I noticed on the agenda when we talked about the master plan, which is kind of coming back, on the timelines I see, to staff, to staffs, to staff. And I was a part of the steering committee, and this was made up of employees, a couple council members, citizens, that was kind of a very diverse group, and we haven't met since March. So I really would like to see, the steering committee was set up to kind of overlook this plan, and I'd really like to see in that timeline, if you would please, it coming back, so we can just kind of take a peek at it too for you. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Donna. Okay, joint, do you mean? Welcome back.
My name is Jim Ann Durkey, 5-4 South Cliffwood Circle, and I want to tell you about a new 501(c)(3) that's been formed. And the name is the Friends of the Mary Ruth Briggs Library. It was formed to try to raise enough money to purchase items for the library outside of the library budget, build a building for the library, and also for the city to have another place for meetings. As it is now, the city has meetings in this event center, and if there were, if there was a meeting building, the meetings could be held there, and the event center might be able to be rented out, which would bring in more money for the city. As it's pretty evident, if anyone has been in the library recently, more room is needed for books. The library cannot grow anymore as far as books are concerned, due to space. I believe if any of you were in City Hall Monday, September 25th, and early Tuesday, September 26th, you will have seen the need for more room. Furniture was stored in there waiting to be assembled, and very few books could be accessed. If we who live in the city want to have an up-to-date library, more room is needed. We will be releasing more information on how to donate in coming weeks. Please keep in mind the Friends of the Mary Ruth Briggs Library. And, another thing, I just want to say, if any of you have not been to the farmer's market on Saturday, you are missing a treat. Homemade bread, wonderful homegrown vegetables, especially the tomatoes, and, well, I can't think of what it is. Anyway, fruit. But now that I say this, forget I said it, because if any, all of you go and buy everything, there won't be anything for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimanne. Thanks, everyone. Okay, next, on the agenda, I'm, here's where we start varying from the agenda. Erin, your turn.
I wanted to let y'all know, we've talked about our hiring process, and you guys on council have kind of seen that happen. We were blessed to get another firefighter, rather, fire specialist this year in the budget. It took us about three weeks to make that decision, and it wasn't easy. We had six candidates internally that met qualifications, and those were some pretty stringent qualifications. All six took a battery of tests, including a rent exam, a physical agility test, a practical application test on pumping for our fire trucks, and a mapping test, learning about target hazards, specific areas in our city of interest and of special hazard for the department. At the end of the day, we had a clear winner, Fire Specialist Noel Shaver. If you want to come on up, I want to just present Noel Shaver, and welcome him to the team.[813.12][813.12](Applause). Y'all that are coming to council pretty regularly, you probably remember me promoting Fire Specialist Shaver a few months back. He actually left us while he was waiting in the wings for a full-time position, went to another department, and I'll let him speak for himself, but he went down there and said, you know what, I love the Seymour's Point, I love the residents, I love the family environment here. I'm putting words in his mouth, but I think he'll agree with me, and was very happy to come back and join us. He officially started with us last week and went on shift this week. And I should mention that as of October 9th, we now have three people, three distinct shifts of, of a fire specialist. And so the community, with the exception of any sick time or any unexpected things, is continuously covered by one career firefighter throughout the day, 24 hours a day, and that's all thanks to you guys and to our city council. So I'll let Noel talk to that.[865.62][865.62](Applause).
Thank you, chief. Yeah, I just wanted to take a few seconds to thank y'all for the opportunity to come on. It's really exciting times to be at the department. See a lot of good, real good firefighters, and a lot of real good volunteers, and we're just looking forward to growing with y'all and keeping the city safe. So thanks again.[884.56][884.56](Applause).
I left out the fact, he's been with us for two, about two and a half years. He started with us in February of '21 as a volunteer, and I remember our very first night when I was still working overnights, and he came to me at 3:00 in the morning with the air pack and said, how does this work? And I'm thinking, man, I did not want to talk about this right now, but we're gonna do it.[904.25][904.25](Laughter). And he has been an avid learner ever since, and one of our best volunteers, and he's been one of the, he's our third folk, our third volunteer that has worked their way up, gotten his fire and EMS certifications, and been employable. That's a pretty cool thing, so thank you.[918.12][918.12](Applause). Yes. Yeah, you want to introduce your family?
Sure. It's my wife, Courtney, and my son, Henry, is five, and my daughter, Madeline, two, and they're all pretty good firefighters, so.[935.56][935.56](Applause).
Thank you very much, glad to have you onboard. Thank you very much. Glad to have you here. David used to relieve too, Taryn, thank you for that too, so. Okay, next on the agenda is club organization, a club and organizational reports. Becky, is this where you want to come in, or is that, or do you want to do it under planning and zoning?
You're good, you're good.[972.41][972.41](Laughter).
They know the truth, they can't hold that against me. Planning and zoning committee, so we're doing that? Okay, yes. So I sent an email to Carrie, and I think I included Uriah on that, for kind of our hot buttons and our things that we want to discuss and what's important to us. As far as I'm aware, I think y'all are sending an email to Carrie about that also, and we're gonna kind of group together for a joint workshop. I sent three possible dates of October 17, 19, and 24, and I'm waiting to hear back on what's plan of action is. I'm hoping that's discussed tonight. That's it.
That it?
I think that's it.
I appreciate it, thank you very much, Johnette.
Right.[1022.12][1022.12](Laughter). Am I doing the comprehensive plan also, since I'm here?
You want to cover that, you want to cover that right now too?
Sure. Okay.
We're gonna come back, because Uriah's gonna do some of this. Good right along, council, we're gonna do the consent agenda. I need a motion to accept the consent agenda for discussion.
I move we discuss consent agenda.
And a second?
A second.
Okay, since that's the case, it's open, and right now, I'm not gonna limit anybody on this one, the three minutes. So did you have a question or a concern? Most of this has to do with the minutes from the last September 8th and 12th workshop, and workshop minutes from September 12th.
Uriah, do you want to comment on the process going forward, or?
For the minutes revision? Yeah, so typically, everybody here receives the revision, requested revisions at the council meeting. It is our intent to get the minutes out to the council within, by the Friday following the meeting, so everything is still fresh in everybody's head, along with my city manager update will be in that email as well. That way, you can provide any feedback, and then when we get that, we can include it into the minutes we send out, and if there are additional revisions, we can discuss those at that time, or make, make the necessary changes.
Yeah, I really like that.
I'll just make a comment. I read the amended minutes sent out by Camille Bowser, and I agree with him, so I would make a motion we pass this.
That's second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we're gonna move the committee reports and combine them with the department reports. So Uriah, you want to take it from there, and I'll let you.
So.
I'm gonna, we're gonna combine number four on committee reports with number eight department reports, so streamline it.
Right, so, so the intent of combining these two together is really to, to make the meeting more efficient, to free up staff that have to come and provide a department report, so that they can leave when we're done with that, before we get into our regular agenda. What we're looking to do, and, and what we're, we're doing tonight, is we're providing the council, and in the packet that you can find online, any committee and department reports, and that way, the, the council have those, so if they have specific questions on the reports, they can ask those, or if departments or committees have something that's outstanding, or something that they need to address verbally, they can do that. But that way, it just, it kind of streamlines this part of the, the meeting. And I'm, I'm not aware of any department heads that would like to address the council. If there are any, please let us know, and as well as the, any committee reports, is there anybody that's, that would be fine?
So we did revise the packet to include the auxiliary, so it's now on the website, and so we will actually put a spot for any other committee reports. That way, as long as they have it to us when they are ready to post, we will include it in the packet, so it's not just available for council, but available for residents to look at it as well.
Pam, you usually do your library report, you want to do that now, and then? Do all the, all the reports at one time?
Okay. Pam Robinson, Mary Ruth Briggs Library Chairperson. In the month of September, we added 43 books, and we now have 7,705 books totaling $93,302. 311 members as of the end of September, with no added members. 401 and a half volunteer hours, and we only added 37.45 hours during the month of September. Volunteer Day was held on September 20th with six volunteers, and our next volunteer is date is October the 18th. Our next library board is tomorrow night, October 11th, at 7:00 PM in the library. I just want to let you know, the library is open. After two and a half months of trying to figure out what was wrong with our scanner, with our supplier and myself, and they went way over my head on some of this, but I was still doing it, we finally got it settled last week, no charge to us. And so everybody can come back in, you can check in books, check out books, and if during this time, you walked out of the library with books and you noticed that the alarm went off, okay, please bring them back, the alarm will still go off and we'll get our books back. But thank you so much for your patience during this time. It, it was brutal. It had started happening during summer reading. As you all know, we sponsor Elder Explorers at the Point, and on September the 28th, we had a really fun time learning how to play Mexican Train, which is a domino game. If it hadn't been for Denise Seibert, she had the patience of Joe with all 10 of us trying to tell us what to do, and then saying, oops, I forgot to tell you, and then, you know, it was, I've never laughed so hard, so that was a great time. Our next meeting is on Thursday, October the 26th. We will not be in here because Bell County voting. We're going to be at Sol de Jalisco, 9:00 for breakfast, and then from 10 until 12 probably, Officer Anderson from the MPR Police Department will talk to us on senior scams, what we can do. So if you would like to go to this, I've brought a sign-out sheet, just so the restaurant will know how many servers they need to have. Our next function is going to be our fifth annual library art show on Saturday, November 11th, from 6:00 to 9:00 here in the event center. We're hoping that it won't be quite as crowded this time, because we are limiting the artists to three entries, where last, for the last couple of years, we let them bring as many entries as they wanted. It was very crowded in here, and we probably had way too many people in here. But we will be having the Lake Belton High School Orchestra in here to play for us. There is a poetess that's going to read to us. There is going to be a live painter in here, and I don't mean the walls, but actually painting, painting. And it's free to everyone, free to the artists, free to the patrons, and it's a good chance to meet artists and, and your fellow citizens out here. We have a good time. Free wine, appetizers, fun time, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, very appreciated. Lynn?
Hi, I'm Lynn Mylum, I'm president of the Morgan's Point Resort Cops. I want to tell you a little bit about what we've been doing the past month. We had a thank, I didn't know there was such a thing, like Daughters' Day, Kids' Day, Sons' Day, there's actually a Thank a Police Day. And we got, it brought to our attention, so we had a little luncheon with the guys down there at the emergency services building, and we ended up, Taryn's guys had a fire, and so when they came back, they joined us, and then Jay joined us from the, his deal, and we invited, we had a speaker with Councilman Snyder there. So it was just a big old time had in the old emergency services building. Very nice. We participated in the Ladies Auxiliary Chili Cook-Off a couple weeks ago. Y'all were there, a lot of you were there, and we had a great, a lot of visitors and wonderful comments on the chili, and we had a great time. We have a food drive going on right now through November the 10th. We've been posting it, and Jimbo's been helping a lot in getting it around on the different pages as well, to, and it's to help the area of food pantries, because with the price of groceries going up, the, used to, they could do seven meals with $1. They can't do that anymore. And so there, and because the groceries are higher, there's more people having to come to the food pantries. So they're really, really in need. So we're gonna collect, and we're gonna split it amongst three food pantries. And the box right now is in the foyer of the police station, and we, we've been emptying it, so if you go down there and there's nothing there, we, we've been emptying it. But we're gonna take stuff and through November the 10th, and we're asking y'all to please check the labels first to make sure that they're not gonna be expired by Thanksgiving, because the food pantries can't pass out expired food. So we'd appreciate that. And recently, we also made kid, we call them kid kits, we didn't know what else to call them, but with the more traffic coming through here, town and everything, I was thinking that maybe the police would have a little more, maybe more stops or whatnot, and they might have kids in the car. And rather than a kid get all freaked out or scared or whatever, we've given them brand-new kid kits for each one of their vehicles, and they've got pencils, colors, coloring pages, a stuffed animal, depending on how the kid is, a small, little small toys that are popular right now, and we gave them one for each of the, we did boys and girls, so that they could put them in all of the SUVs. That's one of our things, and.
I think we're gonna want to stop.
Yeah.[1677.33][1677.33](Laughter). I think, I think he'll put an age limit on it.[1681.54][1681.54](Laughter). Yeah. We had an MPR cops booth at the Senior Expo, and Misty and Marilyn here, they were rock stars for us, and we had tons of people, we invited, mayor came out, Jimbo came out, some of the other, Donna and Larry, and just a lot of people were there, and we really appreciated it. We had a really big turnout, we gave away about three, they require you to bring one door prize, but we gave around three of them out. And we also got four new members from there, and they are actually, and we got, had another one that took the, the little card home with her, and she wanted to talk to her husband, so we could get six out of that. So we're really excited about that. We had a huge turnout at National Night Out, coloring contest, little, little Henry that just left, he was one of the winners in his age group, but it was all picked, it wasn't rigged, it was all picked, the police officers picked the winners, the police officers did it. So we had, we had over 20 kids that colored this year, and their faces just lit up, they saw those medals, and this one little kid's name was Joshua, and he just kept coming back over there, his mom said, I'm sorry, he just keeps wanting to come look at these. I said, let him look at them, you know, but, and he, but he ended up getting third place, and his, he was probably in the 0-4 age group, but he wore that thing like he just won a gold medal in the Olympics. He was so happy. But we will not forget little Joshua. I, and I have to tell you, I could not be more proud of the firefighters that night. I know I'm supposed to be here for the cops, but, I'm sorry, but I'm telling you, they came out in full force, all of them, they had, Ethan was running around with my granddaughter, she was chasing him, he turned around, chased her back, they was, they were switching hats with the little. They just were electric that night. I don't know, you know, what the deal was, but they were really on it. And Karen, your guys really represented with y'all being in TML, they did a great, great job. Chief did a great job, too. Oh, gosh. Okay, we're now preparing for the Third Annual Nipper Memorial Barbecue Cook-Off and Scholarship. That's October twentieth and twenty-first over at ASA Park. The twentieth, we do have a band that night and it went over really well last year. Bring your chairs out, come on out. It's from six to ten, that's free. That also gives you a chance to, we'll be cooking burgers and cheeseburger combos on that night. And if you want to participate and not be a cook team, come on out. And then the next day, we will be selling barbecue brisket plates. And so you can come then too as well and participate with us then.
Lynn, what is the date on that one?
October twentieth, it starts the twentieth. That's when the teams bring their, their big rigs and stuff in. And we're going to have the band that night. And then the next day is the judging, the cooking and the judging.
And that's at Clovis Park?
Mm-hmm. ASA Park.
ASA Park.
Yeah. Yeah. And so that's going to be a while. But like I said, the Friday nights, the hamburger and cheeseburger plates, bring your chairs. And the twenty-first is the brisket lunches. Okay. And then October the twenty-eighth, we will be doing our, I think it's our fourth annual NPR Cops and Fellowship Baptist Church from five to seven PM over at Fellowship Baptist Church on the, on Morgan's Point Road. It's going to be called the Harvest Festival this year. And anybody that wants to help us out with candy, you can put candy in that box up there at the police station because we have so many people come every year through there. And we have yet to run out, so I'm kind of proud of that one. We're also going to be taking donations and a list will be out soon for our Silver Santa program. This is the second year we're doing that. And there will be a box go out on November the eleventh after I pick up the food drive one for, with the requested items. And that's where you have a chance to list a senior in town that might need something. They might live alone, they might not have any family, whatever the case is, and we will hook them up. And I tell you, I passed those things out last year and it did me way more good than it did them because one man invited me in, sat me down, he, want a beer? No, thank you. Don't drink. He had oxygen on, but he was ready because he was watching the Cowboys. And it was hilarious, but I had the best time. He goes, is it okay if I ask you to hug me? And I said, well, yes, it is. And I gave him a big old hug and out I went. But he, I mean, every one of them wanted me to come in their house and sit down and have some tea or beer or whatever they were drinking. And they, it was just very, very heartwarming for myself. But anyway, that's, that's what the NPR Cops are doing right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Appreciate it. Lynn, Lynn, Lynn? The button's smarter than I am. Sorry. On the food drive, is there a way to donate money or is it all just food?
Yeah. I think it would be safe at the police station. I've had people drop a money form, they just put it in a envelope and they wrote my name on it. That's what, that's what the, what it was actually. I mean, and they just put it in the box.
Okay, so food or cash? Or not cash, but you know?
Well, because we will in turn, turn the money order, the way I work that, we'll either have cash checks or money or how you do that. But...
Thank you. As we can see from the previous folks out here, we could not survive without our volunteers. I mean, they do so much for us. A bunch of them are here tonight, there's a lot that are not here. So if you're watching, thank you too. Appreciate you. And like I say, we couldn't, we couldn't do without you.
Hey, Dennis, could I, could I just do a shameless plug real quick for the Parks and Recs Committee? We've got about five more days for applications.
Volunteers, yeah.
And speaking of volunteers, so this is a great opportunity for you guys to get involved if you've never been involved or you haven't, or you're constantly involved. But it's been a long time since we've had Parks and Recs Committee, so this is going to be awesome for our community and I look forward to working alongside many awesome volunteers. So applications, paper ones are over there, still on the website. Five more days, the fifteenth it closes. Dun, dun, dun.
Thank you, sir. Orion, do you want to finish up anything? Anything that we missed that you would like to?
No, no department heads wish to speak.
Dorothy, you want to read?
You got two? Okay.
Just real quick, there is a council report, we prepared, I prepared, was a little bit premature because we were going to be at TML. So I don't, it didn't have all the data in there. One thing I wanted to point out as we close out the financials for this year, something I don't get to talk about a lot. We had just north of seventy-three thousand dollars in revenues off of accounting and off of grants in this past year. But the thing I neglected to put in there is we got a twenty thousand dollar grant that's not including that number at the very end of September. It's going to straddle budget years for personal protective equipment. So about ninety-three thousand dollars back in the city's budget for us last year, which I think is really cool. On the topic of TML, I get to go to conferences sometimes as your, as your department head, as your fire chief, and they're almost always fire conferences. I got invited to TML to attend with some of the folks from council. And I would tell you, it was really, really neat experience getting to know you guys on a more personal level and also getting to see our city interact with other cities of our size. It was really cool as a department head, so I appreciate that opportunity. And then last but not least, Ms. Seibert, I have your name correct? Yeah, okay. Don't ever do that again. No, I'm kidding. I, I know. It is, it is the beginning of Fire Safety Week. We've been involved in a lot of activities. I love that about more signage. It's something I hadn't really put a lot of thought into. I kind of take it for granted that the signage is there in our parks. And you guys in the community, this Fire Safety Week, I told you, we just got on, we got one firefighter around the clock. Now we got more volunteers. We've got over five thousand residents. You guys are our first responders. You guys are the ones that can give us some good pointers. Prevention is the key. It is Fire Prevention Week and it's a great idea. Anybody else that has fire prevention tips or ideas or things that's here in the community, our door is always open. Please bring those to my attention. So thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Appreciate, appreciate all the hard work that you do, particularly on the grants and all that. Thank you. Saves a lot.
Carrie, did you want me to do the auxiliary tonight?
Yeah, I just figured if library and cops did.
Okay, so I wasn't going to do the auxiliary because I thought it was just going to be in the packet, but let me do it real quick for the Ladies Auxiliary, which supports the fire department. The Ladies Auxiliary will meet this Thursday, the twelfth, at six PM right here in the Event Center. They meet monthly on the second Thursday of every month and they would love for you to stop by and you don't have to commit, just stop by, see what's going on. And if you feel so moved, then please participate. They want to thank everyone for attending their recent Chili Cook-Off. They said it was a family fun, very successful fundraiser, and they're looking forward it to be even bigger and better in 2024. And then on September twenty-sixth, they also went with the Belton Journal event staff for the Senior Expo along with cops. They said they had a great time greeting the guests as they arrived and assisting with the entertainment. And then for National Night Out, several of the auxiliary members participated in the city event at the Safety Center, providing brownies to the attendees, supporting breast cancer awareness with giveaways. It was a wonderful event and we visited with so many neighbors. Thank you for the opportunity to take part in this neighborhood gathering. And thank you again, each and every one of you for supporting our events and fundraisers. They really love community involvement because while they're fundraisers, they're also community events. It's an opportunity to get our residents together. And she, and Karen said, we really appreciate you.
Thank you, Dorothy. Okay, moving along, discuss updates on the timeline of the master plan. Becky, I guess you back up again? Were you getting comfortable there?
All right. Unfortunately, I've got two notebooks going at the moment. So we've had a couple of meetings on the master plan the past month or so. Things are progressing. We are, I say we, it's been me, city manager and assistant city manager and the Collier Engineering Firm. We're kind of going over stuff, double checking information, things that are spelled correctly, things that are, I mean, just grammatical mostly. We're not checking any of the information she's giving us because we've hired her to do that for us. And then I'm not a hundred percent sure when our next meeting is, but we are reading over several of those different, she's been sending us PDFs. We're reading over those and double checking them. And that's really my update at the moment. Ryan has more.
I just have a little bit more. In your packet, you'll see that we've included a comprehensive plan schedule that we received from Colliers. A lot of that has staff, 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 planning and zoning, city, city council. After speaking with some of the council members, I feel it's appropriate that we reach back out to Colliers and re-integrate the steering committee into the process. I know the steering committee was stood up for the process of doing that, so I'll, I'll reach back out later this week, early next week and kind of talk with them about how we can get the steering committee brought back into the process.
Good?
Yes.
Thank you, Ben. We appreciate that. Okay, moving right along. I would like to have a motion to accept, consider, discuss and consider Resolution 2023.23, which is the appointment of Misty Baller to the Library Board. Here with motion.
I make a motion that we discuss the appointment.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, anybody would like to discuss that? You have three minutes of fame and if anybody wants to?
I think it's awesome.
Misty, would you stand up?
Yes.
Guess everybody knows you. I'd assume that, maybe I was wrong.
I'd like to hear Misty say a word or two if she'd like.
You want to say something real quick? We're excited. You volunteer in so many ways, I know, so it's really nice for you to step up and join the board or the committee, the library committee.
Yes. Well, I, I will say, I didn't intend to. It's not, I didn't know I was going to be up here today. So this, y'all got to quit doing this crap to me. I love working with the kids. So it started with working with the summer reading program, but I will say with the Library Board, they are fantastic. I do love everything that has to do with books, everything that has to do with libraries. Honestly, I wanted to grow up and be a librarian, but my ex-husband told me I talk too much and I'm too loud and I would not fit in. And I wish I was joking about that, but I'm not. So they are a fantastic group and I love what we do. I mean, I, I have fun with all the events, but everything, I just, whenever I think about the library, I think about, that's just, and it's a place for kids to learn something that they're not necessarily going to learn at home. And I had like a really hard upbringing where we were very street smart and we weren't book dumb, but we weren't, we were street smart. We had to be street smart. And if it weren't for my love of books, I don't think it would have afforded me the things that I've learned in life. So I'm very excited about this, even if I didn't, it wasn't something I was rooting for. But apparently I can't say no to anything, so I just keep saying yes, which is why I keep volunteering for stuff. So if y'all say no, okay, I'll still show up to meetings. Then I just don't have to show up to meetings, so it's whatever you want to do. But thank you.
Can I say something? That's my name. Okay.
I hi, I highly recommend Misty. She started with us, oh, I guess it was last fall, working with us on summer reading. She has such fantastic ideas, so creative, something new that we had not thought of before. And so even after she had done her programs, she still joins us every month at Library Board Meeting. She's, she's there with ideas, even though, I mean, she's just a citizen there. I would love to have her on board because she is very valuable to us.
You both. Go ahead.
All right.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Misty.
I motion to accept Resolution 2023.23.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's already been a motion, already been made, so if there's no further discussion, all in favor?
She actually made a motion to accept.
Oh, well, I said it, I said consider, so I was... Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Welcome aboard, Misty.
Misty, you oppose?
Yes, welcome.
Oh, okay, she's not opposed, so I guess...
And then one more thing, if Andrew is listening, thank you for serving on the board and appreciate your contribution and hope you and Sean, I see you at the art show.
Okay, understand that Andrew Bill is moving out of state, is that what I heard?
Illinois.
Oh, wow.
Illinois.
Not Texas, that's all that matters.
Not Texas, right.
Okay, then, going right along, next one is, I'd like to have a motion to consider Resolution 2023.22, reapportment of Ken Hobbs to Planning and Zoning. Do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
Second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
No, go ahead. Jimbo, Jimbo second.
Ken's not here tonight, or I didn't see him. Are you out there, Ken? I didn't see him. So I guess he's done his own. Ken's been, he's been on the planning and zoning now several years, so he's not new to the, to the board. So is there any discussion on him? Anybody? All in favor of the reapportment?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, he's reappointed. Okay. Okay, Orion, I'm not doing the next one to you, it's your, it's your, it's discuss and consider, how to initiate the RFOs, which is a request for quote process for road study.
We have Alfonso here from our city engineer to discuss the RFQ process, moving forward and what that would look like if the council took action to move forward with that process.
Evening, everyone. Hopefully, everyone's doing well. I was joking around earlier, we should like open some windows because it feels beautiful out there right now. But yeah, so kind of picking up from the discussions that we had at the special work session last month, you know, discussing a pavement study RFQ, for those of y'all unfamiliar, RFQ is Request for Qualifications. That will be the city's official call to be put out there to start looking for firms to do an actual pavement analysis. And so the, you know, if approved, the process that we'll be going forward with is to put that call out there, almost like an ad, requesting for firms that do that kind of work, in this case pavement studies and recommendations, to do a study of the Morgan's Point Roads, at which point we will then select, or we'll have a selection committee comprised of staff, usually four or five people, to rank the people who are the firms who, to submit an SOQ, a Statement of Qualifications, to then pick the best firms to do that kind of work. So they'll be ranked from one, two, three, four and five using a metric and a rubric that we will develop with my assistance as the city engineer. Usually, we, we like to select about ten percent of like however many firms submit to it. So if we end up looking at three, four or five, that's, that's a pretty good amount. At which case, then we could start negotiations. Once council approves our selection, we could start negotiations for these firms to do the actual pavement study. That's when we start talking about price. And the reason why we're doing it this way is because just procurement rules in Texas for this kind of work is you're prohibited from bidding two firms or two or three firms against each other based solely on price. For a public works project like this, you have to select based on qualifications. So before we even talk about the dollar amount, we have to make sure we're doing our due diligence to bring the right folks. Miss anything, Orion?
No, I think you covered it. Of course, we're open for questions, but like you said, the RFQ is the, the method we have to use because of, because of the type of work that's being done. We can't just do an RFQ.
And do you want to give them a rough timeline of what actually probably?
Yeah, obviously, council will be very involved with this, with this entire process from today all the way up to kickoff when they actually start mobilizing out there. When Carrie, Ryan and I... When Carrie, Ryan, and I discussed earlier, what our ideal scenario is, depending on how, if we move forward with this after a discussion this evening, is to put the official RFQ out there in the next week or two. That's something that we can accelerate. And then, usually, that has about a two- to three-week process of it being out there for firms to put together their statements and officially submit. At which point, the selection committee, whoever that is, comprised of staff, will take the next couple of weeks to decide and go through each of those statements, literal packets, to determine the ranking of each firm. So, we're targeting a council award in the December council meeting to officially select a firm. Once we select that firm, we'll take the next couple of weeks to negotiate on the scope and price of the actual work itself and kickoff in January. That's, I think, our ideal timeline right now, given that, you know, we meet council once a month and required number of days that these RFQs have to be out there.
Appreciate that. That means we're moving forward with the process, so that's, we're not, it's not stagnant. So, folks, there are things being done, but there are hoops we have to jump through, and we're going through it, so appreciate that very much, and we'll be looking forward to working with you and your staff probably in the next 45, 50 days.
And I'll be around if anyone has any questions.
I do have a question. So, last week at TML, I met someone in a small municipality like ourself, and they were talking about how they were doing their roads. They were actually subcontracting out the county to actually redo their roads, and I was like, well, yeah, the county roads. And he said, no, all of our residential roads are being redone by the city, or by the county. And I don't know how that process works, or if that's even feasible, or if that was even right.
I think that may be something we can look into, but I think what we need first is to go through this process to determine our priorities for where the money, or where the ask needs to be. But it is something that we can talk to the county about to see if it's an option here.
Yeah. So, I have a quick question. Do you want to go ahead and talk about the steering committee now, so we don't have to wait till November, or you just want to decide on the steering committee in November?
I think we could discuss that by November. There's no reason it needs to be discussed now. That would be a pretty lengthy conversation also.
So, I'd just make a comment. Thank you so much for your explanation, helped me really understand, and I would move that we go forward with the RFQ process.
Let me jump in, I'm with you. I'm going to second that. Quick question. So, will you guys then determine the level of specificity on the study itself? How does, how will we determine that?
Absolutely, and that's part of the reason why we're wanting to go with an RFQ instead of an RFP, is because we, as a city, want to dictate the scope of work for the actual firms who will be doing this. We want to tell them exactly what we want, what our expectations are, and specify that for them to actually do.
There's no other discussion from my colleagues, I will second that.
I don't think there's anything to be voted on since we're not approving anything, so we'll let it sit there, we'll just write it out, wait to hear from you.
Cool, we'll get started, very excited.
So, I guess we agreed to go forward.
Oh, was there?
So, we agreed to go forward, and then, do we want to vote? Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Oh, lucky carries unanimously.
Got that, Camille, or do we need, okay, thank you.
Next one, I'm going to put this up specifically for discussion first, and I'm not going to ask for a vote yet. Discuss city manager hiring process. Open up.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to open that up for discussion.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay, you're, who wants to start it?
I think Orion wants to start that one.
Thank you, thank you, I do appreciate it. So, as Jim and I both mentioned before we entered into this contract, there are a couple of different ways to go through this process for the transition to another city manager. Of course, you selected to go into an agreement with the COG, which we're doing right now for 90 days, but moving forward, I think we really need to get on the ball of what direction the council is looking at going. Are you looking at hiring, having the COG even help hire a more long-term interim city manager? Are you looking at having the COG possibly help, or just the council by themselves doing like a consultant, or a search firm to help? Or are you going to look at doing this in-house? I think that's the first thing that needs to be decided for staff and for the council, so that way, we can take that as direction and start working towards the next step in the process, which will be fulfilling the vacancy.
Okay. Come on.
Well, as long as you didn't ask us to do anything hard. There's a lot of stuff, I think, that we need to be able to talk about, and I think we probably need some workshops to, what is it we think we want to, where's the foundation that we want consensus on, and work from there?
What would you say right now if you had to decide?
Hunt. I think that there's so many things out there that we need to talk about, and we need some help and guidance from Neil and from you, and talk amongst ourselves, not fighting open meetings, I'm not talking about that, in secret squirrel stuff. But talk about what, what do we think we want to do? What do we think that we, I think we've talked before in, whenever it was, May, June, at our little workshop, talking about what we wanted the city to be, and that got put aside for whatever reason. But that's kind of what, what does the city council think that they want the direction of the city to be, reflecting what we understand to be the voice of the community that said, hey, this is why we put you guys in here, dummy. Don't go, you know, this isn't going to be a spaceport or something, let's figure out what we want. But we need to make that, and make that, I think we need town halls and open meetings where we can say, one of the frustrations is somebody will say, okay, when we just do the meetings, we can't talk back to you. So, if you say, okay, why did you pick a blue color when everybody knows it should be green? Because of the way the laws are. I don't want to get into argument with anybody, I'm not suggesting that at all, but how can we, how can we get more input from the citizens to make sure that we're not just, you know, looking in the mirror saying, gee, I think this would be a wonderful idea? Before we go out, because if we don't know what we're trying to get to, then what are we going to buy? What are we going to try to get? And I think number two, we've got to be realistic about this. You look about how many, and Jim talked about it, and Orion, you've talked about it, how fast we've turned over city managers. And that's not because this is a crappy place, that's because the nature of it, and it finally dawned on me, these are football coaches. They're just like football coaches. You know, if they have a winning couple of years, man, they're off to the big boys, and if not, you know, they go home and retire or teach history or something. It's not a reflection on the city that we've had high flipover, I don't think. I don't think there's anything wrong with the city. I think it's a great place, obviously. I think we have to understand that these, you know more about this than I do, they're not here for a 20-year career, most of them, and if they are here for a 20-year career, we don't want them. You know, just give me a paycheck and I'll check in every month. So, I think that we need to have some meetings, some workshops, and I don't know how we can do that. I mean, we're running into the worst time of the year for trying to get together, everybody's got family schedules set up, we've got Thanksgiving, we've got Christmas, and all that other stuff.
Things are moving pretty smoothly as they are right now. You're not rushed to make any type of decision. We've got COG online for a while, so I mean, that's not something we need to settle tonight or this week or this month.
Oh, no, 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 I'm not suggesting...
I mean, things can, I mean, I think things are running smoothly. We give a chance to decide what we want to do, or what y'all want to do.
So, one thing that I've been doing is, I've been reading about how other cities are going through, whether they're doing headhunters or different process, and I've found, like, some of our surrounding communities are using outside entities to actually basically a headhunter. You know, so if I was, again, this is just, we're discussing right now, that's my natural bent, I think, hey, headhunter, get some good applicants. I think I sent an article to some of you guys, that was from GRA, that I think Colleen had 80 applicants for their assistant city manager. So, I believe that there'll be a lot of potential applicants once we get to that place, so that's where I fall.
Well, I know enough to know that I don't know jack about hiring anybody to do anything. So, you know, obviously, my initial assessment is going to be to, you know, to defer to people who know how to do that. So, what I wrote down here, just my notes thinking about here, is basically, we got, I'm going to add one more, four things to consider. Either city council does the search, we conduct it on our own, you know, we hike up our pants and we dive into it. I'll tell you right now, I don't think that's a good idea, from the seat anyway, for me, I'm not going to speak for you guys. We tag you guys to do it, which you guys were instrumental in bringing Dalton on board, correct? Okay. And then, a headhunter, a third party, comes in and does that. And then, the fourth one I wrote down is consideration of that guy over there as we move forward and we get through those audits, to look at the positioning to put Carrie in there, whether we give him a timeframe. For me, I can just tell you, I don't know enough to know anything to make a solid decision right now, so I'm not going to throw that out there.
Okay, my turn. I think, looking at this, that we have worked well with the COG in the past, they're familiar with our city, they already gave us a 59-page book on how to hire a city manager, and so I would have a tendency to lean in that direction, not excluding hiring from internal, but I think there's a process we need to go through before we do that.
Agreed.
She said.
Yeah, so I met with Orion and Carrie yesterday, and I think, and it's kind of along what you're talking about, Pat, and that is, in June, we met with all the department heads, we spent a morning going over a work plan, and we stopped short of coming up with priorities and goals for 23, 24. The normal process is that we come up with 23, 24 priorities and goals before we set a budget. We ran out of time, we didn't do that. I think it's important, and we had planned in October to get back together on that work plan, to come up with priorities and goals with the facilitator that's been used by EDC and the prior council, Alicia Cook, and to walk us through, let's finalize our priorities and goals. Staff, we need to make sure we're on the same page with the staff. We have shored up our city manager with an interim with COG, so I'm feeling less pressure on the city manager than I am. We need to set the direction that we want, because right now, the direction that's out there is what the previous council did almost two years ago. So, I'd like to get back on that horse, bring in Alicia, or Orion, if you know somebody else, but she knows our city, she's worked with our city in the past, and I think we can knock it out, and then we can, it'll have the vision, it'll have the mission, it'll have, you know, our strengths and weaknesses, which I think are 99% of the way there, but we stopped short of priorities and goals. I'd like to see that before we...
And I totally agree with you, but I would like, instead of just running off to wake up and doing that, I would like to have town halls. And I want people to come in and say, okay, this is what we think, rather than trying to divine it. This is our community, we are citizens here. We've been here for a long time, some of us. But that doesn't mean that we are divinely inspired to know what everybody else wants. And I think that everybody would feel better. There's been many a time, and we've all done it, where we've had an issue come up, and we think A, and somebody else says B, as long as we can express those ideas and have them at least considered, then you don't feel like you're getting something jammed down your throat. And that, that's not what we're here for. We're not here to jam anything down, we're here to represent the people, but we need input, and we need to be able to discuss it openly, and if we have a disagreement, talk about it. And I don't think we can do that just at a workshop, I think we need town halls or something, whatever the legal thing is that you can have...
Okay, right now, as I understand, there's a motion on the floor, but I want to clarify, could we clarify it as being, waiting till we have a workshop from maybe facilitated by a third party to reach our goals before we decide that? Is that...
I think that's the higher priority.
Can I use that as our motion to accept that? Is anybody want to discuss that?
I'll make Dennis' motion, that we, we are, we have an interim, city manager, and the higher priority for me is to go ahead and finish up that 23, 24 work plan as a group, and the department heads have had a lot of input into it already, and the next step would be to, for council to come up with priorities and goals. Now, Pat, once we do that, we can present that to the residents and get their...
How about we get the input from the residents before we decide that?
I'll let the facilitator worry about that.
We have a second on that?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, one opposed. Motion passes. Okay, you're right, next one is discuss and consider evacuation plan. Orion, I think you've got that started?
I haven't gotten it started yet. This was something that was mentioned at a council meeting previously, and then brought up to be put on the agenda. I am going to reach out to both the police chief and fire chief and see if we can all work together to start the development of a plan, and then work through that process and get it brought to council.
You got, you got three choices, if you drive, one of you fly, and one of you swim. So, anyway, we'll let, we'll turn it over to Taren and Matt, and Orion, and pick up, and we'll meet back again, let them work on the plan, and then come back to council. Is that fair enough?
Yeah, Mr. Ray, we're, Orion, I'll tie in with you, we have not yet, but I will tie in with you on the HMAP stuff, which I'm, you're well aware of what's going on, and then the overall emergency action plan that we're working on for the city that's just in its infancy, but yeah, the evacuation plan will definitely be part of that as well.
Going right along, next one is discuss 10-year lease with the Corps of Engineers. This has to do with the Marina, and since this was not posted in time, we would like to postpone this and have, could we have a council meeting Tuesday to approve this? It's the same lease that we've had for the last 25 years, 30 years, however long the Marina's been here, and same thing, but it was not posted to 72 hours in advance, so we cannot vote on it tonight. So, sorry that happened.
So, it was posted, but it was not posted as an action item. It was discussion only. I mean, according to previous ruling by the Attorney General, if all of your other meetings say, take action, then that's what it should be.
This is probably a 10-minute meeting, when we have it, is Tuesday at 6:00. Acceptable, one that we could get a majority of council members there?
I can be there. It's Tuesday, the 17th.
17th, and I'm available.
Can we go ahead and discuss it now, and that way...
We don't have the lease, do we have the lease?
Oh, yeah, it's in the packet. If we could discuss it now, then I think that'll make that meeting on next Tuesday really short.
Will you, if y'all like to...
But do we have a quorum for it?
Yeah, I've got three of y'all right there, right?
Okay, okay.
Got three of you right there.
Okay.
Chair, I can squeeze in.
Okay.
Open it up for discussion, just there's no action on it. Discuss it, we're going to leave a motion.
We don't need a motion to discuss.
Okay.
Load on it.
Okay, well, I've got some comments, and then I've already gone over all these with you, Orion and Carrie. I'm assuming this is a standard lease, we can't ask for anything, we can't ask for extensions, we can't ask for different terms, it is what it is, and we have to accept it because that's the way the Corps works. I just wanted to make sure that our Marina manager has reviewed this, understands the terms, and verifies that we are in compliance. It stresses that we be ADA compliant, and so my question there, and I guess we're not because the lake is so low, and there's a gap, and there's steps, and that's not ADA compliant, but do we need to get a temporary exception from the Corps that, under these extraordinary circumstances, we are not in compliance, so that they can't do anything weird with our lease? That's my other question. And then, in, the third point was that, in the document, it talks about... And then in, the third point was that, in the document, it talks about a development and management plan. And I talked to you, Ryan, about it wasn't in the documents, it wasn't in what we had. So he was going to check and see what the development and management plan is all about.
And I have reached out to the Corps to see if they can provide that to us because it's referenced in the lease. And I've also sent the information to Ronnie for additional review. I believe he reviewed it prior to the other day when I met with him. I did also reach out to the Corps because the previous lease, as many of you noticed from 2014, shows an expiration date of 2022. And we are now in 2023. So I'm trying to get clarification from the Corps on that as well. Hopefully, I'll get a call back tomorrow on that.
Okay, super. So those were my questions. So assuming that those all get resolved, I think we need to move forward on it.
And then I'll make sure Neil reviews it.
Oh, a legal review, right, yeah.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Tuesday, 6 o'clock?
Tuesday at 6, we'll work.
Is that satisfactory?
Okay, so Tuesday, the whole purpose of the meeting would be, Ryan's going to come back to us with some answers, and we're going to authorize him to execute the agreement.
Right, that's all we're doing on Tuesday.
Okay, okay. Just want to be clear.
Okay, moving right along. Need a motion to approve, to accept, discuss approval of ordinance 2023.17. That's due waste management rates. Do I hear a motion, please?
Open for discussion? I'll make a motion to open for discussion.
Second?
A second.
Okay. You want to start off, Dorothy, since you've made the motion?
Sure, and I've also met with you, Ryan and Kerry, on this issue. I wanted to make sure that I understood the timing of when this is going to hit our residents, what water bill it is going to hit. And they assured me that it will not be in this coming up water bill. It will be in the water bill that will be due in December. And they're going to start now so that residents have at least 30 days advance notice to communicate to the residents as to this CPI increase. It's a standard CPI increase. Contractually, we're obligated to pay it, so we don't have choices. So I just want to make sure the communication gets done and we give 30 days notice. That's all I had on that.
Ryan, I just have a random question, since we're coming off the Marina lease for 10 years. Is this something that cities can enter into a longer agreement with to lock in a rate?
I am not familiar with this contract exactly.
I mean, we had an evergreen contract with Waste Management prior to Trashgate last year. And so, but then they always still had annual rate increases. I mean, they, just like any service, and we have several within the city, we should be raising rates annually. And this is a pass-through charge from Waste Management through us, so...
I think that lease is terminated, it could be terminated by either party. So if there was a reason that you wanted to shop around for another provider, like you could do that, because I think it could be canceled by either party. Other than that, y'all ready to go on Tuesday then? Okay, and then we're going to, Ryan's going to get this information that Dorothy requested on the lease, right?
Oh, on the Marina, right. On Waste Management there?
Yeah, Dennis, we need a motion, or a formal vote on Waste Management.
I move to adopt ordinance 2023.17 to amend the Chapter 13 of the City of Oregon's Point, Chapter 13 Utilities.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It was approved unanimously? Okay, Ryan, this probably, Kerry, either one of you, you have any update on the audit and on any other projects that we have?
Yeah, I can go through, you want to do the audit first, or you just want me to do my update first?
Do your update and I'll do the audit.
I'll go through my update and then we'll switch over to the, to the audit conversation. Of course, it's been right around a month since I've been here. Very busy, very busy.
Thank you, thank you.
The memo that you're going to receive from me with the follow-up is just, it's a high level of what I'm going over now. So if you have any questions, feel free to give me a call or come to the office. Personnel, of course, all staff continue to work well. They're accomplishing their daily tasks. No concerns with the staff. Of course, Fire Chief introduced our new fire specialist that we onboarded. There is a staff issue that I'm currently reviewing and looking at making a possible change. That will actually be followed up. In addition to this, I will send an issue paper, if you will, kind of describing what the issue is and how I propose that it be fixed. Of course, we discussed the city management recruiting tonight briefly. I've met with or had some communications with, I think, all but one or two department heads for the prioritization since I was in and out. We just weren't able, the others weren't able to meet with me. We're scheduled to meet Thursday this week. Fiscal issues. Of course, we're going to discuss the audit here next. Other big fiscal issues. It looks like the city may not receive reimbursement for some generators that were purchased, believing that they were grant-funded. These generators were required by the Texas Legislature for Senate Bill 3. We had staff that were applying for a grant. That grant kind of got held up by FEMA and is still in a holding pattern. I spoke to their program staff today, and they're just a backlog. So they're, they're running extremely, extremely far behind. At this point, it looks like it's about 18 months behind. We have already done the work for those generators. And with federal grants, typically, you cannot start work on those grants until you have received an award letter. We're looking into more what that looks like because it was required by Senate Bill 3. If not, this could have approximately a $490,000 impact to the city's budget. If we are awarded, but we're unable to use it for the generators, there may be other mitigation efforts we can look into. I just don't know what that process is going to look like. There are a lot of what-ifs right now because we just don't even know. We're still being, we're still waiting to hear from TIDOM on a request for information, which is what they'll get once FEMA tells them to move forward. We're on step 12 of a 23-step process, so hopefully...
It's on step 12 for six months?
Yeah, for longer than six months. So it is, there is a big backlog, they said, at FEMA.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yeah.
So Kerry, you said the previous council had approved the expenditures on the generators. Do you have those resolutions?
Yeah, so it's now on the website, and I'll hand it out to y'all.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that.
I just added the council date into the resolution up to the CIP sheet.
Okay, can I see it?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I think I had talked to a couple of previous council people, and they thought they had said they approved to go for the grant, maybe not necessarily the generators. I have, that's in the packet. What about the resolution itself?
Right, so now I've added it.
But do you have a copy of it, or do I need to go look it up? I'll just go look it up. Okay, I'll just go look it up. All right, thank you.
So, like I said, it could be a financial impact to the budget. You know, there's nothing I can do to sugarcoat it.
Yeah, and not could be, it is.
And we can't, you know, we can't, we can't beat ourselves up. This happened in the past. We need to keep moving forward. I just want to make the council aware that this is going on and there are additional conversations to be had.
This was mandated by the state, too, so we didn't have a choice.
Right.
I understand, but I just want to make sure it was properly approved because I haven't seen anything on it. So I'll just go home and look it up.
Kerry, you have anything?
Any more, just, are you done?
Not yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have more on that. I can keep going. We did receive that open records request. Those records were released. There was a, and you'll see all this in my document, there was an issue with a water line break by city staff. We have, we have taken care of that issue with the homeowner, with additional information to follow. There was a line break in a right-of-way. Staff were working to fix it. Staff inadvertently broke something. We did a lot of research into what's been done in the past. And after we decided it was best probably to pay this and then move forward with a policy from here on out for things in the right-of-way, it was brought to my attention that this has happened a couple of years ago. But ultimately, we ended up paying for the repair or authorizing payment for the repair, for the irrigation system. But we will be moving forward with a policy and sending information to all citizens and all irrigation or contractors that are doing work in the right-of-way, that if anything is put in the right-of-way, it's damaged by city employees doing work. It is not the responsibility of the city to cover any costs.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And I looked for that, and I was unable to find it.
And most, aren't sprinkler systems required to be permitted?
They are, and I'm...
And this one, was it permitted or not permitted?
That I couldn't tell. I couldn't tell if the repair was permitted or the sprinkler was permitted. It was just hard to tell. Yes, it was permitted.
It was permitted. So we agreed that they could put the sprinkler system in our right-of-way.
So my, and there are multiple things that could have led to that. We could have acquired the right-of-way after. I just, I don't know all of the ins and outs about it.
Okay, well, good.
And it seemed kind of useless to kick the can down the road for months at a time for this reimbursement. When we, when there was a clear method to move forward and just keep it from happening again.
Sounds good.
There's also variance requests that we've received, Kerry and I, for a mobile home. There is a lot that goes into variance requests. I was notified of this on Thursday. I'm still researching this. Our ordinances say that city manager can provide a setback variance. State law contradicts that in some portions. So I need to review that. And I'm going to send something to Neil so he can clarify the authority of the city manager for doing a setback variance, if it comes to that. The, there, the construction at the cliffs of Lake Belton Phase 2, there was actually some construction work happening, and a cave system was found out there. Please, everybody, don't run out there and look at it.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a huge safety concern. But Alfonso, as a city engineer, requested that all work be stopped out there where that was found. There's still other work happening in the area. But TCEQ and a couple other agencies are going to have to come out and provide some input on how to mitigate that situation. The last big thing I have is I spoke with the Corps of Engineers about the tires in the lake. They advise they're aware of history of it. But they are actively working to clean tires up all throughout the lake. They are aware of Morgan Point Resort tires. They have been out here to see them. And they will be out here no sooner than probably three weeks to start moving those out. If we have any resources, we can help. They've asked me to let them know. Additionally, Esther's going to, she's got something set up to send out, letting people know that the Corps are aware, also advising them to please refrain from trying to remove tires themselves due to safety hazards and possible environmental hazards from the removal of the tires. The Corps will take care of it. It just may not be by the morning.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to reinforce, those were put there specifically by the Corps for good reasons. They're not just somebody dumping them because they didn't have a place to load them.
So in my conversation with the Corps, they said that they were aware of the tires. Anything that was done to place them there happened before anyone, anybody in our local office was there. So they can't speak directly to the tires, except that they know that they're there and they're working.
I think the only thing I keep beating is that they were not illegally dumped by somebody. They were purposely put there for habitat for the...
And nobody's admitting that, just so you know. The Corps is not admitting that.
Okay.
So you can say it, but it's not, it can't be validated.
In the history of...
It's a myth.
No, it's not a myth. It's a legend.
It's a legend, okay.
You go back and look at what impoundments in the South have been handled for the last 30, 40 years. One of the problems was that when you make an impoundment, a lot of times, you wipe out all of the things that are on the ground when you flood it, and then there's no place for the fish and other things. So all kinds of things were put out there, car bodies and tires and all, you know.
Okay, we need to move right along. We can't change that right now, so...
They're moving right along.
Are you two?
Just a minute, Dennis. The people need to understand, this is not a dumping issue. This was a, whoever did it was a plan, and it's pretty typical throughout the South.
I think that's pretty much, if you were a resident, you probably knew that. If you were not a resident at the time, you probably don't know that. You're right. Ryan?
The last thing I had was, you know, of course, it's been pretty busy. I had an irregular schedule. You folks were at TML, I was in Cleveland. I hope to regain some normalcy and for community members, staff, and council. I intend on being at the office Tuesdays and Thursdays afternoon from 12 to 4:00. If needed, I can come any other time. But those will be my scheduled in-office hours unless something comes up that I need to tend to. With that, I can...
I would like to, I think I'm speaking for the council. Appreciate you being here. It's odd-syndromous. So anyway, we thank you for being here. Kerry, you want to give us an update on the...
Yes, I printed off the email that the auditor sent today. So basically, I'm working with a consultant on one other, she's got to clear up some entries for the fiscal year '21. So if you read in there, the '21 audit, and this really shouldn't even be a draft anymore. It should be completed by the end of November. So hopefully, then on the December council meeting, we will have the '21 audit. And so then the only kind of snafu on this one would be the timing of the '22 and '23. If you go back to the original one, they had said September for the first two. And then really, it was by prior to March 30th for 2023. So really, as they get into their busy season with other municipal clients, whether that's school districts, cities, or, you know, whatever have you, their timeline, their busy season is October, November, December. So really, obviously, for me, as long as we, you know, the first one, all three of them are key. But once we have one, then we know we're, you know, making progress. So really, if y'all have questions on this timeline, I will be communicating them basically weekly, daily, you know, for this month and into November. So if you have any things, then really, after this, hopefully, they're just scheduling fieldwork, and they should be out here in the month of October.
Keep our fingers crossed, folks.
Okay, it's not fingers crossed. We need to make it a high priority. I'm extremely disappointed. I understand, we've had some issues. So what I'm hearing is that the 2021 audit will be done by...
The end of November.
The end of November. Okay, then the 2122 audit will be done by...
It says they would start it in March. So basically, if you look at their timeline, I would think that would be kind of end of April, you know, May.
End of May?
Right.
Okay.
And then it looks like that they would be able to springboard straight into the '23 audit.
Okay, and we are going to have everything ready for them on day one when they start these audits. There won't be any lag in our getting them a trial balance, getting them bank reconciliations. You're going to make sure that we are pristine going into these audit forms, right?
The bank recs will be done all the way through 2021 by the, basically, tomorrow or Thursday. The only other thing that then we can talk about, and I'll communicate it through an email, I've mentioned to you all this in the past, the '23 audit with us using a new software, basically, whenever they pulled over the data, I'm going to say it was April 15th roughly. So for 2023, half of 2023's data is in FunView. Basically, from April 15th through September 30th, we would need to re-get FunView, you know, get FunView again to convert it. However, what I've mentioned in the past is, and hopefully, most of y'all get to meet them at TML, my goal is to, you know, do a software conversion. So in December, at the meeting, I would like to go live with FunView. So basically, the '22 audit, I will have everything done since basically, they will have all the information, basically, probably by the end of the month for the '22 one.
End of which month? This month, next month?
Right, so I mean, really...
October?
Yes. So I mean, really, for me, it's basically letting the consultants do the bank recs. All the other entries are there, and they're helping me look at those. But as they do bank recs, obviously, if something got coded the wrong way, they're making the correct entry. So really, for 2022... So really, for 2022, once we have that done, and whenever I get with Peacock, I will let y'all know. But let's just say, I'm assuming it should be done by the end of the month for 2022, really, the audit will be ready. All the confirmations, all that stuff, all the internal control. So when they come and do the fieldwork, whether they do it just for '21, or if they go ahead and do some of the other things, that it's not going to be going stagnant. So for me, for '21, if we can get that one presented, if we can convert in that time period in December, that'll allow me to help other, you know, departments get used to the software all at the same time while I'm waiting for 2022 audit fieldwork anyway to begin. So, you know, really, yes, I mean, basically, now if they answer, if they ask me a question, you know, this next October through, you know, November until when they present, you know, my primary focus is the '21 audit.
So Carrie, I have a question. I met with the FundView guys, by the way, they were awesome. And I see that that's a very user-friendly piece of software. But if we mitigate into that completely, is that going to slow this process down even more? Because sometimes when you're doing software updates, it creates snafus.
And so that's part of the reason for the delay with the audits. And I'll try to formalize all this in an email tomorrow, just with y'all. But just to go back from the original draft timeline, even though we never stamped it as draft back in January of this year, they've already converted our software ones, you know, basically, our data. So for them to actually go live, they've already seen the issues once. So really, when we go live, there shouldn't be any big surprises with them with our software.
Is the, has it been budgeted to convert to the new system in our '23, '24 budget? So it wasn't planned?
It was planned, but it was just not part of the budget, knowing that let's plan for one year's worth of software, and then we would, because if it didn't work, why would we budget for something that didn't work? If this process didn't work with FundView, and it didn't seem like, the audits kept dragging on or anything like this, why would we budget for something that may or may not happen?
Okay, I'm confused because we just finished the budgets in September. So in September, you did not realize you were going to go through this conversion?
I did. But I mean, really, for me, I'm going to budget for annual, normal, one year's worth of software. So for us, when we did it, if we need to do a budget amendment, that was typically how we did it last year, or, sorry, that's how we did it last year. So whether it would be a balanced budget amendment again this year or not, I just put one year's worth of software in there because that's, to me, what's normally in the budget.
So we're going to have redundant costs, then? We're going to have in code-
Correct, we're going to have-
And this FundView overlapping for a period of time. Okay, it would be nice to know the number on that, then.
Okay.
And I just want-
Yeah, and I would have it when we go in there, that this would be an additional cost when we go live.
Just clarify, I'm not sure I quite understood. So this new processing system could possibly delay the, or slow down the audits?
No, just for the '23 audit.
Okay.
Basically, the data has already been converted. So as of March, or April 15th, 2023, all of our historical data has been put into FundView, the new software that I want to go live with.
Okay.
So for the '21 and '22 audits, they have all the data that they need. So for the '23 audit, whenever we get to that point, we would need to convert from April 15th all the way through the, basically, the end of the calendar year, you know, type data. So they do not have that currently in the software.
Should we hold on the conversion until we get these audits behind us and then convert?
They're still going to have to, then that'll be something that me and you, Ryan, will need to get with FundView to see if they would do a one additional pull of data because they don't have all the data for '23.
Right, so if we didn't transition to FundView, we would have to pay them at least to some level to gather the rest of the data for '23. So we would definitely be double paying at that point. Then, because we've used FundView, or they have all of our records, it's more user-friendly, moving forward, we would have to determine to use our same system that is actually an older version of software, or use the newer FundView system that our CPA is used to and comfortable using to move the process along.
Got it. And so does this convert all of our payroll systems, our utility billing systems? All systems are converting to this new company, FundView?
That would be-
Is that what I'm understanding?
That would be my intent. Yes, and then I'll, I can email them, too, so y'all are well aware prior to December what the cost to go live would be.
I don't like complicating things, but I did see the FundView guys.
Yeah.
And that software was really cool, and for public works and for just different facets, I think it's going to be a good system.
Patrice, have you looked at it yet? Okay, you like it? Okay.
Okay, I guess moving right along, you're going to email that information to everybody?
Yeah, and really, I put this update, I put my email, I just, I re-upload, I uploaded it into the packet, so then that way, residents can see it as well.
Appreciate it, Carrie. Moving right along, though, Ryan, is there anybody that'd like to mention anything about a future agenda? Any items you'd like to have on a future agenda?
I have a question for next Tuesday. Is it going to be here or at City Hall?
We didn't decide that, did we? Were we all-
No, we didn't. I was thinking if we're just going to go to sign-
We're doing it at City Hall?
Well, let us check. Let's default to here, but if it's already reserved for something, then we will let y'all know that it, it'll be somewhere. But yes, we will default here unless it's already reserved, and then we can-
It shouldn't be a long, it shouldn't be a long meeting, you know, within 10 minutes, so.
Just want to know where to go.
Y'all want to do that, email, you want to email everybody, or?
We'll send out the agenda, anyway, with the one-
Okay. Is anybody, anything you'd like to see on a future agenda?
I think that we'll, at that point, be able to discuss and consider parks and recs stuff.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How do we get them posted? How do we get it posted?
Oh, not for Tuesday.
Oh, I thought you said Tuesday.
For the-
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you meant Tuesday.
November.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah.
To put on the agenda.
Right.
Yeah, we'd still do that, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, because of our committee.
We should have all the applications in and lots of great candidates.
Another shameless plug, so get out there and submit applications.
If anybody does find something you would like to put on a future agenda, if you will let me know, please let me know, and I'll-
I did email you, Ryan, and Neil today. I talked to Dr. Brad Buckley about possible ways we could vote in staggered terms, and he sent a response. So I would like to bring that up again on a future-
Staggered terms? We can do that. I think that would be brought up by some of the citizens, so that'd be a great, great idea. I'll see to that, it's on the next agenda, on the next meeting. Did you make note of that, Ryan? I appreciate it. Anything else? In that case, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Oh, wait a minute, anybody have any comments?
I have a comment. I want to just thank the city for sending us to TML. It was a great conference. I learned a whole lot about legal issues, working as a team, leadership issues.